Okay, here we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May we have a moment of silence for all our troops at home and overseas. Thank you. We had an executive session. We discussed litigation. Anything else, Mr. Flaker, that I should mention?
Personnel.
And personnel.
And real estate.
And real estate. Thank you so much, Mr. Flager. Okay. Welcome, everyone, on this Thursday, December 5th, 2024. Okay, we're going to start with announcements. Janice, would you like to please start with announcements?
I would be happy to. Thank you so much. It's nice to see everyone here tonight. I have a text message because Santa Claus is going to be making an appearance this month. It's that time of year. We're all excited about that. Oops, hold on one second, sorry. I shut it down instead of opening it up. Okay, there's a Santa's shed will be on 10, 12, 10, and 12, 18, from 5:00 to 8:00. That'll be at the, over on Evergreen Avenue at the ambulance store. So I encourage you to stop by and get your picture taken with Santa Claus. It's at 555 Evergreen in Warmester. Free pictures with Santa, hot chocolate, and snacks, craft, and face painting. As well as this coming Monday's a special day, but I don't know if somebody else is going to be making that announcement, so we'll see you all here Monday, too. Don't forget.
Thank you, Janice. Chuck?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no announcements at this time.
Thank you. Judy?
Yeah, that's Monday. I think it's at 5:30 here at the...
6:00.
6:00. All right. I hear different times every time somebody tells me about it, so it's 6:00. And it's, and there's going to be refreshments there. There's going to be tents outside. Santa's going to be inside, and it's a wonderful Santa, and we hope that it's not freezing cold. Right?
It's going to be a balmy 70 degrees.
That's right.
Just kidding.
I also wanted to remind you that last month and coming into this month was children and youth, hunger and homelessness awareness. So, I mean, anyone who wants one of these flyers is welcome to have one, but the fact is, well, we're all having a good time and celebrating and having Thanksgiving, and we have a lot to be thankful for, and Christmas, we have a lot to be thankful for, but there are people that have nothing out there, so please keep your eyes and ears open for people that need help during these holidays. Thank you.
Judy, that was a very good suggestion because there is a lot of need for food and clothing and warm coats. Thank you so much for mentioning that. Mr. Hayes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, other than wishing everyone, I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving. Other than that, I have no comments tonight.
Thank you. I have a couple announcements from our Parks and Rec Department. The annual Holiday House Decorating Contest, sponsored by the Warmester Rotary Club, is underway. Register your home before December 17th for either classic or extreme category. New in 2024, voting will take place online via the Park and Recreation Facebook page between December 18th and 25th. Second announcement, we have the Second Annual Holiday Celebration of Lights, also in partnership with the Warmester Rotary Club, will take place on Monday, as Janice had mentioned, December 9th at 6:00 p.m., weather permitting, outside the Administration Building on Gibson Avenue. And Santa will be making his presence. Okay. At this time, we're going to be swearing in our police officers. Mr., I'm sorry, Chief Donnelly?
You said mister, I was looking for my father.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No, I've never called him mister.
Well, again, it's another great night. It is my privilege to present four outstanding individuals to the board that are all in the same academy class. They'll all be graduating next Wednesday, December 12th, from the Montgomery County Police Academy, and then they take their state exam the next day, and then they'll be with us that Monday, starting their FTO program, probably about five, six weeks in-house, and then they'll be on the street, ready to go. But in the, we've hired, we have outstanding police, no matter what, but these are the future of our police department, these four, and the many we hired this year and the year before. So I'm at the end of my phase, so I'm going to be thrilled to be living in Warmester Township with the guidance and the protection of these four young officers and the officers we've hired after, or before them, and the ones we're going to hire going forward, because we're on deck probably for another three for next year already, depending on who leaves and retires. It won't be me, because I got kids in college, I'm not retiring. So, that being said, we'll have Michael Romesberg, we'll have Claire McGuire, we'll have Carter May, and we'll have Michael Feyman. But first off, I will bring the Honorable Chris O'Neil up with Michael Romesberg. Michael lives in Chalfont. He's a 2019 graduate of Central Bucks West High School. After high school, he listed in the United States Army, where he served for five years with the 10th Mountain Division, and I would like to bring him up, and the person that's coming up with him, who's coming up? Mom? Mom's coming up. Michael's father also served in Warrington Police, but on a brief stay, his stepfather served for Warmester Police and went to Warmester, and I worked with his stepfather. So I'd like to present Michael and his mother for swearing in.
I have two microphones. Okay, okay. I don't know if it's on.
Let me see.
You got it, okay.
Raise your right hand, please. Left hand on the Bible. I, Michael Romesberg.
I, Michael Romesberg.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
That I will discharge the duties.
Of patrol officer.
Of patrol officer.
In Warmester Township.
In Warmester Township.
Bucks County.
Bucks County.
With vitality.
With vitality.
I also solemnly swear.
I also do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold.
That I will uphold.
Obey and enforce.
Obey and enforce.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Second is Claire McGuire. Claire lives in Orland. She's a 2019 graduate of the Mount St. Joseph's Academy. After high school, Claire went to the University of Scranton, make sure I'm right, where she played field hockey and graduated magna cum laude with a Bachelor's of Science degree in criminal justice. So I'd like to bring her up with the Honorable Chris O'Neil and your sister. Beautiful. There you go.
I, Claire McGuire.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of patrol officer.
And I will discharge the duties of patrol officer.
In Warmester Township.
In Warmester Township.
Bucks County.
Bucks County.
With vitality.
With vitality.
I also solemnly swear.
I also solemnly swear.
That I will uphold.
That I will uphold.
Obey and enforce.
Obey and enforce.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color.[571.95][571.95][S13. Color. Sex.[572.95][572.95][S13. Sex. Religious creed.[574.33][574.33][S13. Religious creed. Sexual orientation.[576.37][576.37][S13. Sexual orientation. Age.[578.22][578.22][S13. Age. National origin.[579.66][579.66][S13. National origin. Ancestry.[581.58][581.58][S13. Ancestry.[582.41][582.41][S12. Handicap or disability.[583.66][583.66][S13. Handicap or disability. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next is Carter May. Carter lives in Buckingham. He's a 2015 graduate of Central Bucks County East High School. After high school, Carter attended Susquehanna University, where he graduated in 2019 with a Bachelor's of Art degree in political science. In 2019, he then enlisted in the United States Army as a military police officer, and I'd like to present Carter with his girlfriend, I'm sorry, and the Honorable Chris O'Neil.
I, Carter May.
I, Carter May.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of patrol officer.
And that I will discharge the duties of patrol officer.
In Warmester Township.
In Warmester Township.
Bucks County.
Bucks County.
With vitality.
With vitality.
I also solemnly swear.
I also solemnly swear.
That I will uphold.
That I will uphold.
Obey and enforce.
Obey and enforce.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next is Carter May. Carter lives in Buckingham. He's a 2015 graduate of Central Bucks County East High School. After high school, Carter attended Susquehanna University, where he graduated in 2019 with a Bachelor's of Art degree in political science. In 2019, he then enlisted in the United States Army as a military police officer, and I'd like to present Carter with his girlfriend, I'm sorry, and the Honorable Chris O'Neil.
I, Carter May.
I, Carter May.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of patrol officer.
And that I will discharge the duties of patrol officer.
In Warmester Township.
In Warmester Township.
Bucks County.
Bucks County.
With vitality.
With vitality.
I also solemnly swear.
I also solemnly swear.
That I will uphold.
That I will uphold.
Obey and enforce.
Obey and enforce.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next is Carter May. Carter lives in Buckingham. He's a 2015 graduate of Central Bucks County East High School. After high school, Carter attended Susquehanna University, where he graduated in 2019 with a Bachelor's of Art degree in political science. In 2019, he then enlisted in the United States Army as a military police officer, and I'd like to present Carter with his girlfriend, I'm sorry, and the Honorable Chris O'Neil.
I, Carter May.
I, Carter May.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of patrol officer.
And that I will discharge the duties of patrol officer.
In Warmester Township.
In Warmester Township.
Bucks County.
Bucks County.
With vitality.
With vitality.
I also solemnly swear.
I also solemnly swear.
That I will uphold.
That I will uphold.
Obey and enforce.
Obey and enforce.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome to Warmester.
At this time, we're going to take a break so families can take pictures up here with the new officers. Thank you. Ms. Bobby Loftus. Bobby, can you please come up front? One last tax report, please. We have 101 people left to pack.
Wow, that's awesome. That's awesome. Thank you.
On behalf of the citizens of Warmester Township, the Board of Supervisors, congratulations, and we offer you sincere thanks to Bobby Loftus for 25 years of service to Warmester at Warmester as Warmester tax collector, and she's the best tax collector, right?
Yes.
Your dedication, abilities, and concern for the citizens of Warmester Township has set a standard for all in public service to follow. We present this to you with our warmest wishes.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to do it now?
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to ask Mr. Brian Monroe to come up to the podium, please.
The Honorable.
Oh, the Honorable Brian Monroe.
Thank you very much, Chair. Bobby, how long have I known you now? Is it 14 years, I think, since, probably before that? And, you know, one of the things that I can say, being a state rep and having many roles in the county and on this board, is all of the people that I come across, whether it's in business or whether it's in government, is the people that give back to the community in phenomenal constituent services, but it's just, it's more than that. It's just giving yourself. When I saw you on my street one day, going to a neighbor's house because you wanted to save them money on like a rebate or something like that, I mean, like, that speaks volumes about the level of service that you provided, not just for the 25 years as tax collector, but as we discussed recently, your long history in the township. So before I read this proclamation, I wanted to personally say thank you very much, because I think everybody here loves you. So with that, let me get to the citation. This is an official citation from the House of Representatives. Whereas the House of Representatives of Pennsylvania is always proud to acknowledge those individuals who, through professional excellence, being a great credit to themselves in this Commonwealth, whereas Bobby Loftus, Barbara Loftus, is being honored upon her January 6, 2025 retirement from the Warmester Township after a career spanning, this is 44 years, including your time with St. Cyril, and formerly employed with St. Cyril of Jerusalem Church in Jameson for 19 years. Ms. Loftus was elected as tax collector for Warmester Township in 1999, was sworn into the position in January of the following year. During her tenure, she served Bucks County Tax Collectors Association as Vice President and a member of the Executive Board, and she was the District Aid Representative for the Pennsylvania State Tax Collectors Association. Active in her community, Ms. Loftus also served as a volleyball coach for the nativity of our Lord Catholic Church for 20 years, and throughout her career has demonstrated remarkable knowledge, ability, and integrity in carrying out her many responsibilities, thus earning the respect and gratitude of all of those who have received the benefit of her tireless devotion to duty. Now, therefore, the House of Representatives of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania congratulates Bobby Loftus upon her well-deserved retirement, heartily recognizes her exemplary record of service in keeping with the highest ideals and traditions of this Commonwealth, and offers the best wishes for a happy and fulfilling future. Congratulations. And the flag that we had earlier this week, because everything got rushed, but we got this flag flown over the state Capitol. It's a Pennsylvania flag flown over Harrisburg. So again, congratulations.
I know Bobby has her family here, and she'd like to take some pictures. I also wanted to say...
Madam Chair, before we do that, may I speak with...
I was just going to say one comment. Bobby, I just wanted to say, I've known you for a long time, and you have done exemplary, you have set exemplary actions as tax collector that it's going to be very difficult for anybody. You have gone out of your way for our residents. Everybody in this township knows you. You've done, I didn't even know you coached volleyball. That's awesome. But I just want to thank you. I hope you have an awesome retirement. And can Mr. Hayes, you have something to say?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Have a great retirement. I just want to say, as an exemplary public servant, you've shown, you know, you called people, you didn't care what party they were with, you served the public with dignity, and it didn't matter, red or blue, if you, if you, if you, if you thought they weren't coming or they were late going to pay their taxes, you would call them, you would talk to them, you'd get people in there, and that's, that was, that's just a credit to your, your character. And it was great having you here. We wish you a great retirement.
Great. Well said. All right, Bobby, you can take your pictures. Moving along with our agenda, I would like to ask our Public Works Director, Andrew McAdams, he is going to discuss a no parking sign demonstration. Not demonstration.
Can I demonstrate?
Give him a minute to clear the room. I want to, I would like...
Thank you. I appreciate that. I wouldn't invite him to sit closer.
I told Chris O'Neil just to take a shot. So he's going to...
Can you boys behave back there?
Madam Chair, I'd like to say a few words before Andrew gets started.
Certainly.
So the background on this is as follows. Months ago, we received a complaint from a resident on Olive Street that the no parking signs that are supposed to be there had been removed, and then Public Works reinstalled signs after confirming that it was required under our ordinance. Then we had a complaint from another resident about his objection to it and made some unwelcome comments about the township and the, and the things he would do to us if we didn't immediately do what he wanted, which was to take the signs down. After many discussions with the Board of Supervisors, I was asked to take a look at why there are different parking requirements in this neighborhood, different signs at different locations. And so tonight, after doing his research, Mr. McAdams is ready to present a presentation that is based on the signs that are out there now and what the current restrictions are in the ordinance, something we discovered very recently. The entirety of the traffic regulations pertaining to streets and street signs were consolidated into an ordinance in 2019. So the, the items that are in that ordinance in 2019 are the ones that are relative. Basically, they went back through 30, 40 years and consolidated everything under one roof. So after Andrew's done, obviously, if we have questions, we'll, we'll try to answer the best we could. So after you hear what he has to say, we will then, at some point in the very near future, discuss what we want to do next.
As a township, you mean, Mr.?
Yes. We would, what the board would like us, the administration to do, what the administration would advise the board to do, get input from the police department. Hi, Mike. And so anyway, without further ado, this is Andrew McAdams, our Director of Public Works, and this is his presentation.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
So in being asked to evaluate the situation that's currently in the Speedway, obviously, I started with the ordinance, took a tour of the entire Speedway, took inventory of what's out there currently, primary focus being the situation that we do have on Olive Street. So getting a time machine, go back to 1975, talking heads are on the radio. You may find yourself behind the wheel of a large automobile, and you may find yourself with a beautiful house on Olive Street, with a beautiful wife or husband, and you may ask yourself, how do I park here? So in 1975, we begin with suburban sprawl. Obviously, we live in it, we understand what it is, and in 1970s in Warmester, this was, you know, commonplace. So in that proximity of Olive Street in 1975, what I was able to find is the Burger King, the other commercial properties on the opposite side of the houses were being developed in that time, 1974, 1975. In 1975, also, the property ownership changed at 555 Evergreen, which took over, the ambulance bay took over on June 23rd, 1975. On July 14th, 1975, the ordinance was passed to put the no parking signs on Olive Street between Evergreen and Norwood. You know, putting the pieces together, it would assume to me that in conjunction with the ambulance bay taking over, the necessity for ambulances to get down that street safely, that they eliminated the parking on that north side of the street, and also in combination with the development going on with the commercial properties on the opposite side of the road. So that was the initial ordinance, ordinance 284. Jill, if you could slip forward, next slide. So on the left, Exhibit A, you can see, you can't see it there, because I can't, but it basically shows the property transition to the ambulance bay in 1975. Exhibit B, to the right, shows the ordinance 284, and highlighted there is the language of the signs to be installed on the north side of the road. The dates are also highlighted. Within three weeks of each other, it seems like a pretty similar, you know, circumstance. Then, if you could slip, flip one more side. As Tom said, all the ordinances for the signs within the Speedway were combined in 2019, so it's difficult to tell which signs were done at which date, because, you know, without having the specific information, it's kind of, you know, the update occurred in 2019, consolidated all the sign ordinances into that signal ordinance.
Andrew, may I stop here and ask a question? Do we know, does it recognize in that consolidated ordinance which individual traffic parking ordinances were combined?
It does not.
So we have no idea what ordinances were original?
I wasn't able to pull that up.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. So from that point, after evaluating Olive Street, I began to drive, you know, and evaluate the rest of the Speedway. Jill, if you could go back one more. So these are, go forward one more to the signs. There. So these are the eight different no parking signs within the Speedway. So I know a question was asked at a meeting, you know, why this sign is different than that sign, and how come they're not all the same, and simple answer is, different signs have different purposes for different locations, and you can't assume that all signs should be interpreted the same way. So these are the eight different no parking signs within the Speedway. So I know a question was asked at a meeting, you know, why this sign is different than that sign and how come they're not all the same? And simple answer is, different signs have different purposes for different locations. And you can't assume that all signs should be interpreted the same way. So you have no parking, no parking fire lane, no parking here at a corner. So each, each sign obviously has a specific purpose. So then, at which point, I pulled the, went through the ordinance and tried to establish which of these signs were as part of the ordinance. Jill, if you can go to the next sign. So in this map, it'd be difficult to see, but right now, the ordinance has no parking on both sides of Park Ave for the entire length between County Line and Street Road. It has no parking on the north side of the street between Evergreen and Norwood on Olive, and it also has no parking on the north side of Ivy. Ivy, for some reason, was never posted, but it is in the ordinance. The time restricted parking permit signs that you saw are, should be posted per the ordinance, the entire length of Olive, the entire length of Norwood, and Maple between Park Ave and Madison Ave. They're only posted between Madison and Park, not the entire lengths of Norwood and Olive. Also, in the ordinance, it was established that there is no truck traffic on the entire length of Evergreen, Fur, I believe it's Juniper, and the entire length of Olive. Also, these signs are not posted in the Speedway, but they are part of the ordinance. So then, in, in driving it, I was also to identify signs that were out there that are not on the ordinance. Jill, if you could go to the next slide. So I was able to find no parking signs the entire length of Evergreen from County Line to Street Road, both directions, not part of the ordinance. 317 Emerald Street, individual sign, not part of the ordinance. 472 Madison Ave, individual sign, not part of the ordinance. 306 Grape Street, individual sign, not part of the ordinance. 349 Lemon Street, reserved handicap parking, not part of the ordinance. So, not too sure with the individual signs, if they were put up by the property owners in an attempt to reserve the parking spaces outside of their homes, or if it was done through Public Works, there's no record of the signs being installed. So Jill, if you can go to the next slide. So this sign shows them what's out there, the map with the stars identifying the single locations and the no parking on Evergreen from County Line to Street. So obviously, there are discrepancies, both what's out there in the ordinance and what's out there not in the ordinance, so.
So Evergreen has no parking for the length of, from Street Road to County Line?
Correct.
When in fact, it should be no truck parking?
No truck traffic.
No truck traffic, right, okay.
With the width of Evergreen, if there were trucks also making deliveries, it does make it difficult for it to be passable, so.
Right.
The no parking, with the amount of traffic on there, with the width of the road, it would be difficult if residents were also parking on that street, or commercial properties overflow onto Evergreen would also make passable difficult.
But the no parking is not part of the ordinance?
Correct.
Right.
And for the no parking that was identified on Ivy for the north side, my guess is, as the fire station on Madison Avenue, it's probably in conjunction with traffic going to and from the firehouse. It would make it difficult to be passable with cars parked on both sides for fire and emergency services trucks.
And the time restricted, wasn't that for, at one time, the parking lot for the train station?
Correct. It's not, yeah, it's not specifically written in the ordinance, but based on the timelines, it would appear that it was in conjunction with the SEPTA parking lot, so the parking was restricted. It's like 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, which would be commuter traffic, and it is adjacent to the station on Park Avenue. But I don't believe that the parking permits were ever, I don't believe residents were actually ever required to get the permits.
So, if I may, I'm sorry, does anybody else?
Certainly.
So what we've got here, when we've opened up the hood to see what's under it, we've got ordinances that have been adopted, which there's no signs for in the neighborhood. We've got signs that have been put up that are not linked to any ordinances. So there's a lot to unpack here. And with, thank you Andrew, great job by the way. So, over the next couple of months, we need to decide what we want to do. We could let it ride, bad option probably. Talk about changing some of the ordinances, like no truck traffic on Olive Street. Does anybody, show of hands, anybody know? Does anybody know that's the case?
I live there.
Yeah, we live on Olive.
There's trucks going down Olive Street every day.
Right, what I'm saying is that it's not posted for, there's no, there's no signs to say no truck traffic.
So it's supposed to be?
At the point that they go down, they go down like forty, fifty miles an hour, that's a problem too.
Oh, there's like a hundred trucks that go down too, because they try and avoid that issue.
With the Arlenian nativities lights in school season.
Right, just traffic, you know, traffic control for school, yeah.
So.
They all come down the wrong way.
So the board wanted us to take a look at it, this is what we found.
Wow.
So there's a lot in there.
Yeah.
But we believe the, the 2019 ordinance is the, is now the governing ordinance, it's very long, but it has a specific chapter that deals with where there are on-street parking restrictions, and names the streets. So in some places, we need signs, or do we want to repeal? In some places, we need, do we want to keep the ordinance and then put signs up? There's a lot to, it's a, there's a lot going on there. We're going to need a lot of input from various agencies within the township to come up with a solution to recommend to the Board of Supervisors.
I think that's a very good idea, place to start. Andrew, I just wanted to say, very, very great comprehensive study that you did, it gives us a place to start.
Thank you.
And I appreciate it, we all appreciate it on the board. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Andrew.
Do we have, anybody have any other questions for Andrew?
Yeah, I have one.
Okay, go ahead, do it here.
Andrew, for the, handed disabled parking for that one house property, aside from any ordinance, don't those disabled permits have to be applied for individually and the person gets their own sign, whether or not it's in the ordinance, if they're, if it's approved?
Yeah, typically, that would be what I was used to historically, but I couldn't find any.
And they have to get permission from their neighbor?
Yeah, I couldn't find any specific information for that property though.
Okay, okay, thank you.
What is the issue with Olive Street?
No parking on that side of the street.
For what reason?
Because there's an ambulance station around the corner, and they need access to get to Evergreen, which was not supposed to?
Forty years that ambulance bay's been there and I've been there.
If you don't have any curb across the street?
Excuse me, anybody has any comments?
You don't have any curb, you've got a driveway across the street, so nobody's ever going to park.
All right, timeout, timeout. Anybody has comments, come up and, you have to give your name, and if you have a comment, please make it.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay, it's, it's fine.
And address the chair.
Yes, yes.
Address the board, please.
Please, address the board. Do you have a question, sir?
Yeah, I want to know, what's the issue? You said it's a safety issue. There's no safety issue.
Now, the issue is that there is an ambulance station around the corner.
There's a firehouse up the other end.
Right, and there's, you just heard, there's, there's no parking restrictions near the, they're supposed to be posted along Ivy for that. Right, we're talking about signs that should be posted and are not posted.
And aren't.
So, for Ivy.
So for forty years, the signs that were posted?
Well, we don't know how long they were taken down.
Well, I've been there for forty years.
Okay.
And there's no signs.
For forty years, there was no signs?
Forty years, there was no signs.
That's.
You going to call me a liar?
Not calling you any.
Thank you for your comments, sir, thank you.
You know, it's a bunch of crap.
Okay, we're moving along now to Lance.
You have nine months, three months to figure this out, eighty days to figure it out.
Sir, thank you for your comment. Anybody else have any other comments? Go ahead.
Well, come on up.
Come on up. Just give me your name.
My name's Norm Smith, I live at 586 Olive Street.
Okay.
Okay, now I live right behind the Burger King and there's curb there, okay? I've had a problem with people parking behind my, right in front of my driveway. It's hard for me to get in and out.
Right.
He doesn't have any curb across from him, he's behind where the National Order, well, Alto is now. And he doesn't have any parking across from his driveway, so that's never going to bother him. So, you know, that's his, I don't know what his beef is, I don't know.
We, thank you, sir, we don't either.
So, so let me ask you a question, I'm sorry, what was your name, call back up? So, so you're not opposed to the no parking across the street?
I love the no parking sign.
All right.
I love them.
We just wanted to clarify.
I think Burger King actually put no parking on the grass too.
Oh, okay.
Because people would come and park half on the grass, half on the street.
Okay.
So, it's, it's a double duty there, it's working.
Thank you for your comment.
And you have other problems on Olive Street, we'll get to that later.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other comments? One up.
Hi, Henry Taylor, 417 Grape. It was, it's not specifically with Olive, it's actually Evergreen and Madison. When I looked into the ordinance, it said it was neighborhood collectors, does that qualify for no parking? Because I couldn't exactly find what a neighborhood collector likes to find within the ordinance.
That's a question for Craig, he knows what that is.
Oh Craig, you know, okay.
That doesn't qualify for anything.
All right Craig, you're right.
I'm trying to stay out of this one. Now, that, that has nothing to do with what it's classified as. Now, obviously it's a state highway, there's different regulations, but within the township, that's more for design purposes. It does lend itself if, if they want to do no parking based on the, the classification, but it's not a requirement, they're not tied together.
Okay, I just.
A collector is, collector refers to that it's a, it's a more than a, yeah.
It's a volume of traffic.
That goes local collector arterial.
Yeah, I saw it and then I was driving around, I'm like, oh, I'm seeing no parking signs, I didn't see anything in the ordinance, I didn't know if something was overlapping there, so I just wanted to get some clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. Any, thank you. Any other comments? Come on, John.
John Prillo, 674 Joseph Avenue. Now that you're doing that, maybe we should talk about what happened back a few years when we had the problem in the industrial park where they put the illegal no parking signs up in front and we had an issue, and we had to come before the board.
I remember when you went through that.
Right, and the signs never got taken down, so that might be something we need to do. Some of the signs that he showed up there, you know, no parking by owner and all that, they're not like township signs. That's like an owner doing it, they're posted, they should come down, definitely. I'd say, I think tightening up that ordinance would be a, a good thing. Now, as far as Olive Street, you know, we load, unload and unload the cars for Warmester Auto Body back there, so that part of the thing, so if you put no truck doing, you know, through there, then it stops us, I don't think we can get in the backyard. So, illegally, if you want to talk about the legal part of it, you know, because we can't, you know, we'll do it, but you know, we want to bring it to your attention that we're using it for the township duty tow access, so, okay?
Yeah, John, we, Andrew had indicated earlier today that there are a few neighborhoods that would probably have to be, areas that we have to take a look at.
He had mentioned that, yes.
Not just this one.
Yeah, right, okay.
Because there are homemade signs and there are places where there are signs and no ordinances and the other way around.
Yeah, it sounded good, I mean, I liked, I liked his presentation, it was really good.
Well, it was thorough and accurate.
Oh, absolutely.
And we do recognize that all the, all the ordinances, we want to have to go through all the neighborhoods.
Forty years of everybody doing as they want or doing as they see fit.
Right.
And different things like that, you know?
Right.
It's time we had it, we had it.
Yeah, well, like the handicap one, I guess they would have to get a permit for that, right? The people, you would have that.
I would think they would have to apply.
Yeah, because I know like our neighbor that was next to the body shop, they had a handicapped child, so certain times during the day that the nurse would come and she'd park in the street and then, you know, there was an issue one time, they were looking at.
They get individual permits.
Yeah, right, right, yeah, neighbors. All right, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Happy holidays to everybody.
Same to you, thank you.
Enjoy it.
Okay?
Thank you. Any other questions? Come on in, or com, I'm sorry, comments? Yes.
Okay, so I'm on the 500 block of Olive, my name's Don Wilson, I live at 556. We're having an issue with the business Altos. He took it over a year ago when he, you know, he started doing things to the place, like he literally cut them Burger King's trees without their permission. Now that causes a lighting issue, we had spoken about that. He has a sign that is reflecting, and the guy that just left, Rich, goes in his bedroom window, he didn't say nothing about that, but, and it reflects off the other buildings. And I sit in my, on my couch, and there's a pole right there, and it's just blinking all night, his sign.
The main sign.
The main sign is just blinking. And now he put a refrigerated truck out there.
In the rear.
In the rear, within fifty feet, facing my house, running twenty-four hours for the past thirty days. And he said he has a permit, but I looked at, I read the ordinance through the township. And he can have a permit, but he can't make noise twenty-four hours.
You have a very valid point, sir, and somebody is going to look into that for you. If you could give your information to Jill?
We have it.
Oh, you have it, okay.
Yeah, so, and I want to know, like, who, is LNI part of Warmester or are they a different entity?
Yes, they are, they're part of Warmester.
Okay, because I guess the guy Mike keeps closing the case, but the generator is just constantly blazing, like, I shouldn't have Thanksgiving dinner with a generator coming in my window. My kids can't sleep, right? His kids, grandkids, five houses down.
So it's, it's a refrigeration unit?
Yeah.
Okay.
And he stacked a bunch of skids, which is a fire hazard, against it.
That's to muffle it.
To muffle it, and I don't understand, like, why, but.
I want a picture, Don.
I don't even want to show him the picture. I mean, he, he get, we, he asked for a permit for a variance for the front, we got notified. But we don't ever get notified when he dumps stuff in the back, like a C container, or this trailer. Now he's got a refrigeration truck sitting there, and he's just doing what he wants.
Well, thank you for bringing, bringing these points up to us, because we can have LNI take a look at it and see what's going on.
They did, they closed it.
Madam Chair, can I?
They're going to check again?
I mean, I, I think they have, you have, there's a report that was submitted, and you were notified by LNI of all.
Yeah, they say he's not within.
Yeah, the compressor meets the noise ordinance, I mean, I haven't been involved, but based on LNI's findings, you were notified by cer-
Based on the police, the police told me.
Email and certified mail, you were notified that they looked at it, and it does meet the ordinance requirements.
It doesn't, and I'll tell you why, a police officer.
I'm just reading the report that it does, that's all. They weren't aware that they already did look at it.
All right, I'm not trying to cut you off.
Well, I could help you out, because there is a report that they don't have, that says that they did, LNI did look at this, it does meet the ordinance requirements, you were notified. Now, if you don't agree with the ordinance, because there's lighting and noise requirements, and if it, if it meets the ordinance, they can't do anything. Now, if you disagree with that, then I would respond to the certified mail document where you feel it doesn't, whether it's a noise engineer, a lighting engineer, whoever you can say, or however you document that they're wrong or it's inaccurate, then you need to put that in writing back to LNI, and they'll look into that, and that's where we get involved at times too. So, if you don't respond in writing to say where, where you disagree, this board is not going to be able to weigh in on it.
He's giving.
They're not the referee.
He's showing you the path to get some help.
Well, and I also want to say, if I may interrupt, I'm sorry.
Sure.
I, I meant to talk to Mike Itali yesterday or today, he's our zoning officer in the, the department, he's the company director there, and, but I didn't get a chance. So we'll have, we'll have something in the next week or so for the, you said, did you say there's a cargo container back there too?
Yeah, there's a cargo.
How long has that been there?
That's been there since the open.
Since the open.
Well, like a, an overseas shipping container?
Yeah.
Sea box?
Yeah, he can't get his trash picked up because his people are parking, blocking the dumpsters. So the parking sign needs to, the no parking sign needs to stay because his people were blocking our driveways, and we couldn't even get out.
The building's too small for what he wants to do.
What he wants to do is too small, there wasn't enough parking.
His, yeah, his employees are parking on, they were parking on Olive Street.
In front of the no parking signs?
Well, no, not no more, they weren't, once the no parking signs came, they stopped.
Yes, and then now he doesn't have, I guess he doesn't have a freezer inside his building, so he has a trailer with a compressor, because he didn't buy, his building is just not capable of doing what he needs to do. Like, it's the back of the building is a factory, there must be eight, ten, ten of these trucks.
Why don't you come on up?
I have an idea.
We're actually on television.
Yes, I have an idea here. If, you neigh, the neighbors that are all on board with this, that are having issues, well, you can't, a petition is not going to work, so what, what our engineers trying to tell you, if you want to get any type of resolution with a township, you have to answer the letter that he was talking about.
We haven't received it yet, but.
Correct?
Well, we'll take. Yeah, I mean, that, that is definitely a, a, a good way to do it, but since I'm, I'm the township manager, I don't know if the signs down there are.
Wait, he has power.
So, I meant to, I do, but I don't overrule decisions made by department heads, especially its owning officer, who's empowered by the law to make those decisions. However, I did want to talk to him today about what's been going on and what, and what he's communicating to the owner of the bakery and to the neighbors. I did not, was not able to do that today. I, but we will have it soon, if not, we'll definitely have something by the time the board recon, the next time the board reconvenes. So, we are aware, they brought it to my attention the other day, from LNI, so, and as Mr. Kennard said, you know, if you want to let us know, let, let Mike Itali know, hey, Mike, I got your letter, here's why I think you're wrong, so on and so forth.
Okay.
It'll definitely help. But yeah, we're going to have something, we're not going to have a, you know, comprehensive slideshow like Andrew had, but we'll, we'll have something.
By the time you do this, he said it's going to be gone by the end of December.
My concern is it's 2020.
So that's the problem, he's only using it for the holidays. But then he's probably like.
But every year?
Every year, and then come Easter too, he sells pastries and stuff, and Easter's a big time for pastries. Is he going to bring it back for that too?
Well, you, this is all, all the things that we're going to have to get from Mike Itali, yes.
Hopefully for Christmas dinner, I don't hear no noise, that's all.
The compressors leaving at the end of the year, or the C, C box? The compressors leaving at the end of the year or the C box?
No, the compressor. He says the compressor, but now he just bought a compressor truck parked on the side of the building.
So he's got a refrigeration truck parked on the side of the building?
Yeah.
And a C box without any refrigeration, just a C box.
Correct, it just sits there.
And then a tractor trailer against the wall.
Okay.
It's becoming like a junkyard.
Excuse me, may I ask a question, please? The fact that he's got the refrigeration truck and he move it, can we make him move it to the front at the end of the business day? Then he moves it to the front of the parking lot so it's not disturbing the residents?
I'm going to talk to them to see what authority we have for that kind of stuff, yeah.
I know it's supposed to be use 86 is what.
Yes, non-residential accessory structure.
But it's not an office. He's not an office. It says in there, you know, with the exceptions of him being in an office, it's not an office. It's, I know it's in there as like a cafe, but it's not a cafe. The cafe's in the front.
Alls I know is the report says the trailer falls under, like you said, use 86, is permitted in the commercial district. And like I said, the more, the more that you document, if you know, you know more than I did, and I think you know more than they do, if you respond in writing, put everything in writing, that's what's happening here. I've been here too long to see it. If it doesn't get resolved, if, just respond in writing back and then.
He closes it.
He closes it every time.
Every time.
Well, now we're on top of it.
All right, thank you. I don't want to waste your guys' time. Thank you.
No, thanks for calling in because if we're not, if we're not aware of.
Emailing them and calling them is what she said. We went to LNI, and she said you need to stop calling and emailing us.
Yeah, as Mr. Hay said, if we're not aware about it, we can't help.
That just happened today.
And you came, thank you for coming tonight, and thank you, we will do everything we can.
And if you can document everything.
The better.
And present it to, to the management or, you know, the township manager or whoever, and we'll make sure things get resolved.
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't mean to call Mike today, like.
It's all right. It's fine, totally fine. All right.
Can I bring some?
Certainly, go ahead, sir.
Let's get back to the, to the, well, we're supposed, and we're evidently supposed to have no truck traffic, but that.
Turns out.
Turns out.
Turns out that way, right.
There's these two dump trucks that come down in the morning. I swear to God, they're going 60 miles an hour.
Yeah, what about what time?
They must stop at Yum Yum and get their drink of coffee or whatever.
So it's like 7 o'clock in the morning?
Oh, it's earlier than that. It's like 6:00.
6:00?
And they're, they have to be doing 60 at least.
Okay.
I've lived there for 30 years, and I, I think I talked to you when you were trying to get on the board. I think it was you. I can't remember the other names.
It's been a long time since I got on.
A year?
Yeah.
Might have been you, and I talked to somebody about stopping the cars. It's not that they come the wrong way. They come down 30, 40, 50 miles an hour.
It's just too fast.
Oh, I, I almost got clipped once coming out of my driveway. Now I look both ways. I shouldn't have to want to one way, but. I've asked about speed bumps, and I was told by, I don't know if it was you.
Speed bumps, yeah, they're a problem.
Because of the ambulance corps, we can't.
Right, correct.
And plus they destroy our, snowplowing.
It destroys the streets, but I'm, I see the chief there, right there looking. I bet he'll be, he'll be checking it out.
Put a car in, down lower in the block.
Well, I was asking what time.
Like a speed trap.
Right.
You'd make $1,000 a day.
Do you hear that, chief? You'll make $1,000 bucks a day.
Would you like to make $1,000 bucks a day? We don't make money. Well, township would make money.
No, we don't, we don't make any money on that.
Somebody would make money.
What we do, we would calm the traffic.
I lived in a township in Delaware County. When I was like 12 years old, they changed the street to a one-way, right off of McDavid Boulevard, which is a major road in Delaware County. And they put a guardrail across the one side and put no, no, one-way and do not enter, which stopped the cars from coming up. I mean, I don't know if it's in the budget to do that, but it would be an easy thing to do.
Here's the thing, we want to make sure any sign we put up is, has been authorized by ordinance.
Correct.
Okay, well, the ones down the end of my block there, next to the ambulance corps are too high. People turn, they don't see them.
Okay.
So, too high. You, when you're driving down and you don't see it, you're just going to turn and.
You have to look up, you're saying, to see the sign.
Yeah, either put them down a little bit on the, on the side where Jiffy Lube is, so when they turn, they see them that says do not enter or in one-way or whatever. But, you know, it seems like an easy problem to fix to me.
Well, thank you for all of your suggestions. We are listening.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Have a good night. Thank you. All right, moving along, land use matters. We have, may I have a motion for the amendment to the subdivision and land development ordinance saldo? May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the subdivision and land development ordinance.
I'll second.
Second? Any discussion?
Nope.
And we have any questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It's 5-0. Thank you. All right, public comment? Anybody have any public comments? Mr. McKee? Ooh.
Uh-oh, you're on this side now.
He was a former supervisor.
First time in 13 years. My name's Mark McKee, 517 Revere Terrace. It's great to be back in the room again, and it's great to see all of you again. Mr. Haybeck, you look terrific in that seat, by the way. I know it was like, it was like an hour ago, but I wanted to come up and thank Bobby Loftus. Bobby has been, was a tremendous tax collector. She's been a good friend of mine for many years, and I wish she was still in the room. I told her in person, but I wanted to get up and thank Bobby, and I want to wish you all happy, happy holidays. Hopefully, I'll see you all over the holidays.
Same to you, Mark. See you around the neighborhood. Any other public comments? Sir, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of board. My name is Olek Alexander Dersko. I'm a resident of Warmester for 23 years. I live at 59 Evergreen Avenue. And out of those 23 years, 12 of these, 12 of the years, I have a huge problem with a hookah bar that is right across of my windows. I'm talking literally 60 feet from my bedroom window. I believe it was already two or three times I was here at, throughout those 12 years, and Chief Donnelly wouldn't, wouldn't let me lie, right? Well, we went to court together. We tried to shut this place down, and unfortunately, the place is still operating. It's a third owner, second name, but, you know, there's the saying, if there's a lot of flies in the house, you know, you don't start killing the flies. You take the trash out. So basically, this is what we have to do, because just, just a week ago, it was a car meetup at the, in the front of my windows, shots fired, and.
Did you call the police?
I'm calling police every time. Unfortunately, the police doesn't show up on timely matter all the time. Sometimes they just give enough time to these people to dissipate, and then, you know, so I'll show you.
Sure. Thank you.
So it was terrible. It was tires screaming, shots fired, I mean.
Unfortunately, our board can't do anything about that. The police department can. When you call the police, it should be contained at that point. And you went to court, you said you went to court.
Police showed up. The guy took, right before the police showed up.
Oh, I see.
Whoever was making the circles, okay?
And you did go to court to try to shut them down, correct?
Yeah, it was, I believe, 2014 or so. I'm not, I cannot recall the exact day on that.
I'm sorry you're going to.
On November 20 of 20, there was a shooting in my, my back, my front yard, actually. There was people chasing another people from that hookah bar and shot at each other from a gun. After that, I had, well, the only benefit was the police officers were raking my leaves, you know, in order to find the casing, so I didn't have to do that. But, I mean, nothing changed since then, okay?
I'm sorry, again, sir, if you took it to court and you can't close it down, and they, and they are, if they are adhering to our ordinances, and the police come and they take care of the situation, as a board, we can, there's no action that we can take on that.
Well, there's one ordinance in this township that they call noise ordinance.
Correct.
Yeah, and it's, I got an even number for that. It's a 10 dash 303. And they constantly violated that ordinance for 12 years. Can we take them to court again?
You can call the police if they're making too much noise, just like any other neighbor. If the neighbors are making too much noise, they call the police and they put a stop to it. That's, I'm sorry, we can't help you more with the situation.
Well, actually, we, at this point, we demand their occupancy license to be revoked for that reason, for the constant violation of, of the ordinance.
Then you call, then if you, yeah, then LNI places an inspection test to get involved.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
And also, I would like to ask police to install their camera trailer on that parking lot.
That's up to the police department.
Well, I'm asking it publicly.
We can't, I can't authorize that. That's up to the police department.
Okay, and if that's possible to patrol on the weekends between 11:00 and 3:00 a.m.? And actually, I don't know why this place is allowed to be open until 3:00 a.m. and serve alcohol.
He's going to patrol on the weekend for you, okay? The police, the chief is right back there, and he said yes.
Chief, do you want to, do you want to?
Do you want to say anything, chief?
Can I ask you something while he's coming up here, sir? The next time that they're doing donuts in front, if you get an opportunity to get their license plate, that way when they do leave, then you can give that to the officer. No, no, I don't want you to jump there. No, 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 don't get yourself, but if you happen to see.
I want you to do exactly what you're doing.
Okay, chief, go ahead.
Yeah, we've had problems with the hookahs in the past. Problem is when we go to enforce it, the owners change. They just pass it from family member to family member, and then they, they change UNOs and all that stuff, and they go back and forth. And there are problem everywhere, but this one's, it's next to the bar. It's in the same shopping center. I talked to the owner of the shop, of that little strip, who happens to own the bar next door. Yeah, spoke to them, and they, that was back when we had the shooting last time. The shooting from last week, we're not, I'm not aware of, but neither am my lieutenants, but we get alerts for those things that go off all the time. So it depends on how it was coded in, coded in the CAD. If you have it on camera, we'll come get it. But, yeah, I'm texting the on-duty supervisor for Olive Street for tomorrow morning between 5:30 and 6:30.
Okay.
I see.
And for a hookah bar tonight, and then hookahs on our board all the time, but.
Thank you.
We're unaware that they spark, they spark up about this time, because they're indoors, and they let 20, they let 19 and 20-year-olds go in there, and sometimes they bring alcohol and other illicit material in there as 18 and 19 and 20-year-olds would do.
If you're, sorry for bothering you by interrupting.
Not bother. I'm getting paid.
Yeah. I know the tobacco law, you have to be 21 to be around alcohol, tobacco, so how are they, they're letting them in, knowing that they're underage?
Yeah, they're all underage in there, so, yeah, it's not, problem is, the Pennsylvania law says you're not allowed to purchase it. Has nothing to say that they can't possess it.
Because I know such places that still have smoking.
Yeah, like the, like the place at Juniper and Street, or Juniper and York and all that, they let 20. So we're going to have to, I'll get on Sergeant Byrne tomorrow, and we'll, we'll do some of our, our things out there that we could possibly do.
Thanks, chief.
Too much, I know, but we've, we've worked with them before. But it's, it's a changing in ownership, so every time the ownership changes, they should be required. I don't know if their UNO is up to date, so we'll have somebody contact LNI tomorrow.
That's great, thank you.
And we'll go from there.
So we're going to do everything we can do as a board, okay? Thank you.
Well, 12 years, 12 years.
Yeah, well, I can't revoke, but we'll talk to LNI. We'll, we'll get the LNI on. I mean, unfortunately, 12 years ago, our LNI wasn't the quality it is right now. So, yeah, so we're going to put them to the test.
Okay.
All right? Ah, welcome to Pennsylvania.
Fireworks are, we don't.
Your house, the Brepple guy was just here. You can talk to him.
Yeah, fireworks are banned here, and, but people still do it. But he, the chief is going to help you out, and let's go from there and see how, the help you can get.
Oh, is that from the dentist's office? Yeah, we locked that guy up. He did it again? Yeah, we got him on video. From the bar? From the hookah bar or the bar? Doesn't really matter, but same timeframe, between 12:30 and 3:00?
3:00 a.m., 4:00 a.m.
Oh, that late?
5:00 a.m.
All right, we'll take care of it.
Okay, thank you, chief.
No problem.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving along. Anybody, any other, anybody else?
Might as well, Bob, come on up.
Hello, everyone. Bob Wells, Hollow Avenue.
Hey, Bob.
I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving. I have a couple of things. One is, what's the status on Whittaker Basin? Because we had one truck come down so far and dump a bunch of ballast at the end of the street, so we're just wondering what's going on.
That is a question for the municipal authority.
Okay.
Okay.
I didn't know if he was engineering or nothing on schedule.
The authority handles all that now.
Okay. The other thing is, I noticed there's a tremendous amount of cars parked in the Tesla parking lot. My concern there is, a couple of meetings we were in with them, they stated the fact that the cars that were going to be in the parking lot were not going to have batteries in them. They were going to store the operating batteries in the back. And my concern is, is one of those cars catches fire, we got a problem. Because I asked them if they had a meeting with the fire companies in township, what would be their procedure if we had a fire in that parking lot with those cars? And they said they did not have any kind of meeting with the fire companies. So my concern is, there's a lot of cars in there, more than we thought there would be parked in there. So I don't know if there was anything to look into that. Make sure those cars don't have batteries in them.
Well, if I may, so, yeah, so Joe Veltin has material data, material data safety sheets on all places that have stuff that's on the big list, and I, we can check in with Joe, you know, tomorrow or Monday, to see what's going on with that, what the, what the safety ramifications are, what the challenges would be for first responders, but we want to make sure they're safe as well when they go. Yeah.
Thanks, Tom.
We can check on that.
Okay, that's great. You all have a great Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Come on up, John.
Yeah, John Preo, 674 Joseph Avenue. Back to that Tesla thing, because I remember what they were saying. They were supposedly, supposedly only bringing the vehicles in to, for delivery. They're actually bringing them in and storing them there and waiting for them to get sold. And that's not what we, that's not what they said in the beginning. I knew that, because that's what was discussed. But it looks like they, you know, they didn't, they, they weren't saying they were going to use the whole parking lot either. They said it was going to be pretty far back and whatnot, so, you know. I guess it warrants something to take, take a look at.
Don't worry about that, John. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other comments? All right, let's move along to our consent agenda. Consider approval of the board of supervisors been instated November 7, 2024. Extension of Pennsylvania recycle grant program with how associate, Hugh Associates, 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 is that how you say?
Huff.
Huff? There's probably different ways to, Huff, associates to 2028. Thank you, Adam. Consider authorization of municipal police cooperation agreement for November 27, 2024, and consider Esca release for Final Street Road Industrial Park Lot 15, Nina Way. May I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
I'll second.
Any questions from the board?
Nope.
Any questions from the public? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye. Motion passes 5-0. Finance report. Chuck, you're up.
Thank you, my head chair. Where are we at here? An approval of a bill list and supplement bill list. Bill listed date November 21 at 2024 in the amount of $1,567,299.86, with a supplemental bill list dated November 26, 2024 in the amount of $877,585.62, for a grand total of $2,444,885.48.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes 5-0. New business. The adoption of the 2025 budget as advertised. John Ramey, do you have any comments that you want to make at this time prior to?
I'm actually going to jump back to the financials for the end of October. This is going to be super quick. Before I actually get started, I do want to give a shout out to Bobby Loftus and congratulations on her retirement. She's been fantastic to work with for the last four years while I was here, so you cannot stress how important a good tax collector is, so she's really made my job easier, and she's done a fantastic job. Looking at the financials, everything still looks really great, especially focusing on the expenses. the expenses. We're at 86% of budget this year. We were at 85% of budget last year, so we are tracking very similar to last year. The one thing on revenue I'm going to talk about is just earned income tax, because yesterday we had an earned incomes tax collection meeting for the county. So I do have a report from Keystone on what the county is doing. So through the end of November, it's up 1.9%. Looking at our financials through the end of October, we're up 1%. November's a big month, so I think we are tracking them as exactly like the county is. So we are really following exactly what, countywide, what is happening. So that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you.
Just trying to make it quick.
Thank you. I knew you had a couple of comments.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to be adopting our 2025 budget as advertised. May I have a motion?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
And is there any discussion from the board?
Just one comment.
Certainly, sir.
Madam Chair, it's been, John, thank you to you and your staff, and all the department heads and everyone involved. Great job. This is probably one of the first times we didn't have hundreds of people complaining and arguing and questioning everything we did, because we've had balanced budgets for the last five years, and that's, that's a great job, and thank you.
Thank you, John. All right, I, I also would like to just highlight some of the things that we're doing in this budget. When our board was first, when we first changed the board, and it was Ken, I, Judy, and, and Mary Owens, and we realized at the time we had...
And Mark McKee.
And Mark, I'm sorry, Mark! Mark's right there, there he is, he was right there, that's he...
Said you were leaving, Mark. We didn't see you.[943.41][943.41](laughter)
I'm sorry, Mark.
He'll be back.
And we, as a board, decided that we were going to stop the spending, right, Mark?
That's right.
And we stopped the spending, and now we're on an even keel with our budget that we have never had before. So I'm very, very proud of that. We've hired 46 police offers, officer, we have four, we have 46 police officers.
Nope, that's what we're budgeting for.
Oh, we're budgeting for...
For 2025.
Oh, we're budgeting for 46 police officers. What are we up to right now, chief?
Uh, that was just 41, 40, 41, 42, 43.
All right, up to 43 police officers at this point. So we're going to go up, up to 46 in the 2024 budget. We have, we're up, I paid firefighters, up two from 2024. That was incre, incredible, because we had never had our own fire department before. A steady increase in our Act 511 taxes. If anybody needs any information on that, that's all John. Continued capital improvements, walking paths in the park, library carpeting, golf clubhouse renovations. That is going to be amazing. Do you know, we will be bringing a ton of money when we do the renovations at the golf course. We'll have weddings, we'll have mitzvahs, birthday parties, you name it, we're going to have it, okay? Also, all the roadway improvements, like 25 miles of roads, curb ramps, technology, and the ability to pay the debt service with no tax increase! Woo! All right.[1047.33][1047.33](applause)
Craig, don't we have, aren't we close to 55 miles of road pick?
I thought that's what the, I don't have it memorized, but we're up there.
Okay, I didn't have that in mind.
It's okay.
Okay, I didn't have, yeah, I didn't have that.
It's actually a little more than 25.
I can't say it's up to 55, that even makes us even better. Okay, so those are all the improvements. I'm probably missing some things. I'm very, very excited of the work that we, that we were able to achieve, and the, and the, all the innovation, all the, all the, all the resources that we have, that we are using to improve the, the quality of life for our residents, and, and to leave something behind for the future, and I think we're on our way to doing that.
Yeah, we also were able to make extra payments to our MMO.
Correct.
Quite a substantial amount.
And for our post-retirement benefits. We're one of the first town, townships to do that, so I'm very proud of that, too. Chuck, do you have any comments?
No, I'm at this time, it's a great job that John has been doing, another township with getting everything together.
Judy, thanks, Chuck. Judy?
Oh, I'm just, we have some great department heads in Allen and Warmminster, and I'm really proud of them all. I thank them for helping us look good.
Thanks, Judy. Ken, you have anything else you'd like to say about it?
Just, we've done this, we've, we've balanced the budget, we've gone from a $2.5 million deficit to a $18 million surplus, and, you know, we've done this without having to raise taxes for at least the last four years, so it's quite an accomplishment. And what, what do we used to say? I think the, the township taxes like $645 per household, somewhere around there, and we do an incredible amount, provide an incredible amount of service for that, that number. So we're pretty proud of what we've accomplished here.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. So, may I ask, okay, all in favor?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, before you go...
Yes, you have something?
Three things. One, the, the millage is the same as 2024, property tax millage, trash fees are the same as 2024, and there's no new debt for the 2025 budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So should I combine the two of them?
No, we need to do it separate.
That's what I was doing, I was doing it separate. Okay, all right, so all in favor to adopt the 2025 budget as advertised?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes 5-0. Second, adoption of the resolution setting 2025 tax millage and ta, trash fees as Tom Scott had just described. May I have a motion for...
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I think I need to read it.
Oh, okay, go ahead. Okay.
It's, uh...
You need to tell me that.
I'm sorry.[1220.58][1220.58](laughter) Thank you, I'll be brief.
Go ahead, Tom.
Uh, it just says that setting the, the rates is hereby resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Warmminster Township, Bucks County, Pennsylvania. The following real estate millage for 2025 is established to Warmminster Township in Bucks County, PA. General fund, 14 mills. Ambulance fund, 0.19 mills. Fire fund, 2 mills. Library fund, 2.35 mills. Park and Recreation Fund, 3.5 mills. Debt Service Fund, 2.02 mills. Further resolved that the trash fee for the year 2025 shall be $440 per year per household, subject to senior discount for residents 62 years of age in the calendar year for 2025 of $55 per year per household, yielding a trash fee of $385 per year per household for seniors. That's the whole thing.
Thank you very much, Mr. Scott. Does anybody have any questions?
Uh, I'll motion to adopt the...
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Motion?
I'll second.
Second, thank you. Questions?
Nope.
Any questions from the public? All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0.
All right.
All right, next, professional reports. Tom Scott?
Madam Chair, I just want to point out that this is our last business meeting of the year, and as you may know, and I think we had a pretty good year, and I'd like to thank the board and all the great department heads and all our outstanding employees for a great year, and our strategic partners sitting up here with me, and those that are not here tonight at Spirit Golf and at the Barry Iset Group in, on Bristol Road. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Solicitor, Adam Flager from Flager and Associates.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We don't have anything except to, as, as Tom said, to thank the township for trusting our firm. We enjoy working here with everyone collaboratively and doing great work for the township. Hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving, and a happy holiday season, because it's one long season. Happy and healthy New Year, and we'll see everyone in 2025.
Thanks, Adam. Mr. Craig Kenner from Gilmore and Associates.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You have our December engineers report. I don't have any additions or changes. I think, actually, you may have missed a couple of other projects that we did, or smaller public works facility, some upgrades there, and also some lighting at a couple of parks.
I could have gone on and on.
I thought you did, yes, I'm going through the engineers report.
I'd still be talking about it.
It's been a busy year, and as Tom and Adam said, it's actually been a really great year here. I think we've done a lot, accomplished a lot. Things are really rolling here, the administration and board, everybody's a cohesive team, so it's been a really enjoyment working here this year, and I know we're already lined up for a lot of work next year. I want to thank everybody, and happy holidays to everyone as well.
Thank you, Mr. Kenner.
We'll give you due consideration, but please submit your fees soon for 2025.
I was waiting till after the meeting.
Mr. Scott.[1421.12][1421.12](laughter) Mr. Scott, you're up for announcement of upcoming agenda items.
Okay, I don't have any agenda items to go over with you, except to say we're going to have reorg on January 6. It's a little late this year, but the state decides what day to do it. That's Monday, the 6th. All right. So I'm asking that the Board of Supervisors cancel the scheduled December 19, 2024 Board of Supervisors meeting, because we don't have any more business to talk about.
No objection.
So we're going to reorg January 6, and no other meeting in January, is that what you're saying?
No, we're...
I thought you had another one.
Yes, I was...
Oh, okay, I see.
We're going to be, it'll be the 3rd Thursday in January. We were going to, we're going to advertise all these meetings.
All right.
So far, we, we've only advertised through reorg.
Correct.
So, but then it will be the first, the 3rd Thursday, which I think is the 16th of January.
That's what I have on my calendar.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Quoted personal privilege, your, is it January 2nd still?
Yeah, no, it's the same...
No, it's the first Monday, first Monday of the, of the year.
Yeah, the state sets it.
You have that on the calendar.
I, I know, and I crossed it out.
Okay.
I guess I didn't, I guess I didn't cross it out on your copy.
I got it now, okay.
Supervisor comments.
I'm pleased.
I'm sorry, Judy, are you finished?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Supervisor comments. I'd like to, I'd like to speak first, if that's okay. I, it's really, really nice to end the year on a, on a good note in the township, knowing that, you know, we have all these different projects and coming up in the, in the, in the new year, and knowing that we have the, the best administrators and department heads, with the leadership of Tom Scott, our township manager, Lisa Howdyshell, our, our assistant township manager, John Ramey, our awesome finance director, Mike Wash, Walsh Planning Director, Joe Veltin, Emergency Management, Peter Leuh, can I pronounce his last name correctly?
Peter Leuh.
Leuh. Library Director, Jessica Fox, Parks and Rec Director, Andrew McAdams in there in the back, Public Works Director, Jim Donnelly, our police chief, and Mike Atara for Five Ponds. We have the best group of, of administrators and managers of our departments than we have ever had in this, in this township. When we were in the financial situation that we were in, we hired the best people, like, starting with our Tom, Tom Scott, and on down. And so I'm looking forward to all the projects that we'll be completing in 2025. I wish everyone happy holidays. It is a pleasure working with all my colleagues, Janice, Chuck, Judy, Ken, Tom, Adam, Craig, and Jill. Thank you, and thank you for everyone that looks at the meetings and attends the meetings. All right, that, I'm done, thank you. Happy holidays! Who would like to go next? Janice, you're up.
Okay. Oh, thanks, everyone, for coming out. I did fail to mention that, look out on December 21, because Santa Claus will be driving through the town, so you'll hear the fire sirens going on for hours and hours as he's coming through town, so just to make sure that everybody's ready. And I would like to wish everybody a happy holiday season, be understanding of other people around you, because it's sometimes an emotional time as well, so look out for your neighbors, and be safe, because it's going to start getting slippery out there, and winter is upon us in just a few short weeks. Have a great evening.
My, my turn. First of all, I'd like to thank Bobby Loftus for all of our...
Do that, too.
All our hard work at the township, and congratulate her on her, on her retirement. Also, I'd like to congratulate the four new officers. I wish them their best, welcome to Warmminster, and, you know, keep, keep an eye out for them as they're making their way through our streets, learning the streets and, and our faces. Also, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and a Merry New Year, and that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck. Judy?
Hi. What they said.[1682.66][1682.66](laughter) And also, I, I wish, and whatever holiday you celebrate, it's fine. I want to remind you that even though it's supposed to rain on Monday, and we're having big snowstorms up in the northeast quadrant of the United States, we don't have enough water yet. We're out of extreme drought system for Bucks County, but we're still in a, a bad drought system, and you have to do everything you can to save water. You know, turn off the faucet when you're brushing your teeth, things like that, little things that you don't realize. When you put it all together, it uses up the water. There's not going to be enough snow melting down to the Nishami Creek, there's not going to be enough water, there's going to be a bad drought next summer if things don't change in the weather, so with that bright note...[1731.33][1731.33](laughter)
No fires outside.
Have happy holidays, have happy holidays and a good New Year, and thanks to everybody. And one person that helps this town run, that people, that wasn't acknowledged tonight, is our executive assistant, Jill Meyer.
I mentioned Jill, didn't I?
No, you didn't.
Like you said even more eloquently, Judy. Judy even gave it, even made it better.
She puts everybody where they're supposed to be, so...
Yeah, she makes sure we do everything we're supposed to do. All right, Mr. Hayes.
Enough said.
Mr. Hayes.
Have a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, whatever holiday you celebrate. Conserve water, do what you can to conserve energy. Let's leave on a happy note. Enjoy your holidays and be safe. As Mark used to say, we don't want you to have a meeting with our police chief.
Yes.[1786.54][1786.54](laughter) Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.
(end of transcript)